All the meetings are ordered since 30 p.m.
And we have, saying all five members in session.
I was just trying to help you.
Thank you. We have some announcements before we get started. Early voting Saturday, October 19th and Friday, November 1st from 8 to 5 in the town offices for your parentheses law. A special town meeting will be held in pocket middle and high school auditorium Monday, October 28th at 7 p.m. Doors open at 6 p.m. for check-in. Finance committee booklets are available online and in print copy around town. Whittier tech listening sessions, they're looking for participation from residents. There's more information on town website. And on Tuesday, October 29th from 10 to noon, Greenbelt is hosting a Art Joe River Woods celebration for opening of the new trail system. And finally, save the date, we're planning a public meeting on the Main Street Group 113 for a planning project. That'll be November 14th from 6 to 8 p.m. Any any news, I assume?
No, no.
Okay, great. All right, regular business, a joint meeting with finance committee, town moderator, town clerk, town council, and town manager for review of special town meeting and draft motions. So how should we start?
So we set down motions around by email on Friday. And early today, we got some minor markups from Tim, who's joined us via Zoom. So you should all have those, but I also have them up on the screen showing the red lines that Tim had made. So if you reviewed what went out Friday, it's just the red lines that are changed.
Any, want to go through one by one or just if there anybody has questions? Makes the most sense.
We start on the reports if you know which committees have let you know they're gonna be.
Do you have a list?
I do. If you don't have it right there, we can come back to that. Yeah, yes.
And there'll be a list before, he's pulling it up right now.
Okay, so right now I have under Article 1, Ray Cook, the planning board, or a planning board has to be Angus Jennings. Article 6, I have Liz, the chair of the County Executive Residency Committee. And Article 7, Fred Shania for tree community.
And do they want to give their reports at the beginning or do they really wait until the article?
Liz for Article 6 and Fred for Article 7, but the other two at the beginning. But I'll send you the, in case anyone.
Just send me.
Yeah, in case anyone adds on to the list.
Angus, you had a report, do you want to do it at the beginning or?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Does someone from the board want to say something about Miva or I could include that in my comments?
You can include it.
Okay.
All right, anything else in Article 1? Article 2? Any questions or concerns about the tax rate reduction? Right, Article 3, open space and recreation plan, just some minor editorial changes there.
So I do have, I don't know if you want to plug in tonight, who would be making the motions? Or do you want to do for the, for those the board is sponsoring? Do you want to draw straws like you normally do or have different board members make motions?
I prefer they don't all make the motion. It's more like a participatory. If the same person doesn't make all the motions.
Yeah, why don't we draw straws?
I think we can just decide, we don't need to do it right now, right?
No, no. But so for instance, on Article 2, it will be the select board member making the motion.
Sure, wants to do that one.
Sure.
Right. Open space and recreation plan. That would be somebody from the CPC, is that right? So maybe Graham.
That'd be excellent, yeah. Graham loves making motions.
Graham Bashmore. Graham Bashmore from the CPC. Trail markers at Mill Pond, this one, the amount needs to be revised to 3,900.
Excuse me, Article 3, is he speaking of CPC or open space?
CPC, he's the open space member on CPC.
Okay.
3,900?
3,900, yeah, but originally the eligibility application was 4,500, but then when they got closed, they brought them to 3,900. Or have somebody from Mill Pond, can you make that one?
I'll reach out here. Yeah, I'll contact Matt.
Then.
So just somebody from Mill Pond.
Probably Matt, I don't know if he's in town, still he's in Georgia. Move to the next one. I mean, all right, this is one that there was some consent about. I think we got our adult case, right? Oh, you know.
I seriously doubt if anybody will come up with this because it is, everything's become, I'm thinking about it. But if it should come up, a motion to divide the question is in order.
I do want to share, I got two new graphics today from the engineer, which I, we had expected to come in this week. So I'll put those up on the screen here. Tim, let me just do a share screen for you. So for those of you who saw the Pinkcom booklet, this will look, this up on the screen now will look very familiar to you. But it's slightly updated, the one in the Pinkcom booklet was based on the 25% design plans, which are substantially similar. But since, you know, it is town meeting, we wanted it to be 100% design plans. So we did have TBC prepare an updated graphic. Again, it's substantially similar to most people, it would be identical. But this is actually overlaid with 100% design plans, which are, you know, they're, you know. So this is my understanding, we can have this up on the screen, we certainly have the tech capability.
They have, they have a screen, I think it would be worthwhile to alert people at the high school that were looking to use the screen.
Yeah, yeah, that's all set, yeah, that's all set. So we have this, and the other thing we just got from them today was from the survey subcontractor. We knew there might be questions about kind of exactly what's the, because 450 square feet plus or minus. This is from the surveyor received today. So this, this would just make sure we're crystal clear on what area of land we're talking about. And I think everyone in this room knows this, but I'll just restate it. The condition of DOT during the permitting process was that, you know, they won't have, they won't allow a crosswalk to nowhere. So this needed to connect to something. And so they imposed as a condition of the permitting that during the 25% design stage, that this new sidewalk be constructed of the secondary driveway. And then within that, it became evident that that sidewalk would be basically bisected by the state highway right of way. That's not acceptable to the DOT. It needs to be either fully within or fully upside of the state layout. So with this land taken shown here, the proposal is to convey this small portion of land from big school to DOT that it would become part of the state highway layout. So.
The school committee approved that.
Oh, cool, great, great, good. I have a question, I know we have the ability to check this and put it up. Is there any benefit to a package or are there constraints upon us putting out a?
We could do that, I would be concerned that because it's essentially, you know, if you look at the booklet, both of these exhibits are in there.
Okay.
These are just like slightly more accurate.
Yeah, fine.
I feel like a handout is going to make people think there's like material notification and it's really not.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
So, so we could do that, but.
No, no, no.
Just projecting it on the screen.
But in general.
We could also have these printed at poster scale and have them at the, at the sign-in. And we could even set up, you know, Butch or Christine Wallace there to like, if people have questions as they come in.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Because sometimes you have a few minutes to wait there.
Yeah, and that way when it's up on the screen, it's not the first time people have seen it. And we could have some handouts, I just, I wouldn't want to try to do one.
You guys, you guys go with what you feel, I like the idea that you just proposed.
Yeah, we'll do, yeah.
People generally, the interested people then have an opportunity to, you know, talk with someone about it, that's great. Thank you.
Great.
All right, Tim, feel free to jump in if you have anything.
Yeah, no, it, I've been just reading the details in the, in the graphic and it looks, I mean, everything up to this point looks fine. I, I mean, I understand Casey's point about dividing the question and I agree that it could be, it would be appropriate to divide if, if somebody makes that motion.
Okay. All right, any further questions or comments on this article?
No, but if we do divide it, then we have to have an explanation to the people there as to the significance of dividing it and the significance of thinking that you can say yes to.
Yeah.
I think you divided.
No, no. No, no.
You're right, if that happens.
But I'm just saying, in the case it was divided for some strange reason, we would want to have, prepare ourselves for a good explanation so that people don't get reconfused.
No, okay. All right, anything else here?
Who's making this motion?
I assume it's the select board.
Unless, unless he's like Butch can make the motion, he's a resident, I'm sure he'd be happy to. Of course, it's a lot to read though. If he doesn't want to, I'll let him know Chris is happy to do it if.
Do we have to let them divide the motion, Casey?
It's, it's the vote of the town.
Okay, so if you're going to do that.
Actually, the moderator can just decide to do it, believe it or not. If it's, if it appears that it's getting to be difficult.
Right, or someone can make the motion.
Or someone can make a motion. And there would be no reason to rule it out of order, so.
Like Wendy says, hopefully it won't, it makes sense to keep it contained, but it's gotta be.
And I will mention that the motion to divide the question can mean divide it before discussion or divide it strictly for voting purposes.
And can the implications of dividing it and one part, you know, some portion passing and some portion not passing be explained?
How many times goes to great trouble to tell you that you divide the question and part of it gets passed that then has an adverse effect on part that was previously taken up? That's the only time you can move to reconsider.
Okay.
So we can get into a real mess, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's gonna want to divide the question.
Yeah. All right, move on. Article 6, you assume Liz is making this motion?
Yes, she'll be happy to. Speaking for her.
It's being talked for, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And Jim's just doing the report.
Well, it's actually listed in the Pinkcom booklet as a select board. Yeah, it's going to survive the select board.
Okay, if, if Liz doesn't, I'd be happy to do it, nobody else does.
You have Butch do this one.
Okay, good. That makes sense.
Yeah.
And so why is the tree community being on this, isn't it a DPDW?
Right, wants to speak before they are.
I'm speaking in space. When you do the school, it gives law, you don't want to speak.
All right. Article 8, county bills, select board, I'll do that one.
I do, one little thing. Okay. This is a highly unlikely scenario. And we've already discussed the fact that it has to be nine tenths because some of the empty bills would have required a nine tenths. But that begs the question, some of them probably didn't for whatever reason. Do we have a list somewhere of what the individual bills were, so if anyone asks?
Oh, yeah.
We can, I mean, that's kind of thing some.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the article, the articles packet that went out back in, in early September, so, but I'll send that to you. It's, it should be in your inbox back when that was sent out, but I'll send that to you, those bills are all edited must.
Wasn't it, there was an additional one added a couple weeks ago, right?
No, there was gonna be one and then it wasn't.
Oh, it's a, okay. Thought we saw an updated list.
No, no, because, because I forget the specifics of that one, but I think that was something that had been covered for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. It's a short list.
Yeah.
It's a very short list. Excuse me one second, could we, when we get done with Article 8, can we just go back to Article 7, 7.1 question?
All right, we're done with the edit.
Done with it?
Yeah.
So.
Actually, I do have one question, so I think with the bylaw change we made, the moderator now has the, is able to call.
Two thirds.
For a two thirds, okay, so if it's anything but unanimous, you may need to do a.
Right, if it's obvious to everyone in the hall, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's not, then we'll have to count it like the others.
Article 7, just. The motion doesn't mention ash trees, but in the Pinkcom booklet. So just to clarify, is this fifty intended to be a continual, yeah?
Yeah.
So the Pinkcom booklet's correct, the motion doesn't need to do that, but, but. Yeah, well, whichever, I mean, the idea was we were going to do consecutive, however much it took, we're gonna do this constant ash tree, ash tree, ash tree, just to separate them out from the rest of tree business.
Which are in the budget.
Yeah, right, which is the rest of the budget and there was a sense that that makes some sense under circumstances. I just wanted clarification, the, the, these will be used for ash trees. If someone says the Pinkcom booklet says ash trees, we can say, yeah, we're asking, yeah, I presume that that's good under the motion.
Let's just say ash tree, oh, it does in the very back.
It does.
The rationale, but not enough in the article.
Not in the article, right, exactly, that's what.
I mean, well, actually, it depends on the motion, but if the motion's made the way it's written here, it could be any hazard tree.
Yeah, so what's your plan? Do we just change it to ash?
That's the intent.
That's what I am saying, the intent.
If the article doesn't say that, is that a problem?
No, it's within, it's trees, it's still trees.
Okay, so this is a subcategory of the art.
Yeah.
All right.
The warrant says trees, this is just.
Yeah, I would be anxious about it when we were going the other way around, yeah. If your article said ash trees and then somebody said they wanted to open it up, all trees.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be a problem.
This is narrowing it.
Yeah.
To what we all agree, so the motion will contain ash.
Yeah, I didn't.
But someone could make another motion because it is the purview of the article.
Sure.
To deal with any hazardous trees.
Got a big budget that already does that. Yeah, I take your point. Okay.
Wait for it, I used to get it.
Yeah, got it.
Okay. All right, rescind issued debt, so are all these changes made?
Yeah, so the one, you, and the version I sent out Friday, you probably noticed I put the comment. And it seemed to me it should be specific, and Tim verified that, that, yeah, it, the specific debt that was issued and not, or that was authorized but not issued should be, should be named. So we do have, there's basically two borrowings from the late 90s. So you can see, we've still got a couple of placeholders in here, we'll, we'll work with Jenny to make sure that that's exactly right. It's, it was all outlined in her, you know, the initial article request form. But that'll be specified based on the article and the date in which the debt was authorized.
Okay. So is this select board?
Yeah.
And the amount is, I'm sorry.
The total amount is, I think it's $105,000, so Tim, you might go.
Wow, oh, there's, yeah.
No.
Well. Yeah, there, there was a little bit of a puzzle on this one, it turns out. Because the, there was debt that was proposed for voter authorization in a spring town meeting in 1999 for $200,000. It passed, but was subsequently rejected by.
To, the motion was made improperly or something.
Some procedural issue.
So it was voided.
So it was brought back to that fall town meeting for $300,000. All that was needed was $200,000, but, and so we don't, we weren't here, it was 25 years ago. But it was brought back that fall for $300,000. What was reported to Matt's Department of Revenue and to Hilltop Securities, who we work with on borrowing, was $200,000. So what's been carried in the bar, the statement of indebtedness for 24 years.
Then Hilltop found a letter that, that essentially with our correction, but it was never updated.
Yeah, so basically, in terms of the Department of Revenue, the borrowed, the authorized borrowing was $200,000. But in fact, it was $300,000, $300,000. So whether, the amount that was borrowed was like 95 and change, no, 195 and change. So we're either turning back a little less than 5,000 or a little less than 105,000. So we're gonna be working with. It was incorrectly reported by Department of Revenue in 1999.
So is it actually a turn back?
No, it's not a turn back.
No, it's not.
No, no, it's just, it's.
This is just pure house.
It's pure, yeah, the money was never borrowed.
Right, exactly.
Right, it's, it's, but the authorization to borrow remains on the books and therefore remains in our statement of indebtedness and all of our audits and so forth. So this is just a getting that off the books. But yeah, the specific amount is something that, that we learned today, it's not as simple. Because it's been carried on the statement of indebtedness, which we rely on.
You'll have it by, you'll.
Our predecessors have it done correctly.
You'll have it from motion, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on it, yeah.
All right, so. I mean, I can do this one. Do you want to do it, right? This is probably gonna do this.
I'm not sure. Oh, oh, okay.
All right, so.
Read it again. Pretty simple.
Yeah.
So I would note, this is actually two separate, this is one where there are, it looks like two separate motions. Yeah, so, so that's gonna be.
Oh, okay, that's why I was wondering. None of the tax title, that would change.
Yeah.
Chris is. Chris, you can have one.
Correct.
And so, who was there regarding the line, the both options? Yes. I assume you're doing that wrong. But one of your thoughts?
But you play, I'll do it. Yeah. I don't know. You go with it, but.
I have a question in that, Rob, with the static on last year, is there somebody else?
Yeah, let's have that. The job's call, or the committee's call.
I think Russ, I can do it.
Yeah, chair.
Maybe turn off.
I would have thought so, but I guess we're gonna have a session on this thing, probably.
The only comment, another one too, is last year they, I don't know why opposed it so much. I took this stance, we weren't gonna say anything, this year if there's opposition, I will.
Yeah.
Support it very much.
So, Rob.
So this is Article 11. What happened to Article 10?
Chris, Chris is gonna.
I'm sure.
I.
Motion, sorry, everybody is law. So one thing, Rob, when Pinkcom recommendations are recorded at town meeting, do you plan to just give the recommendation or do you plan to kind of elaborate and?
I thought I would limit the elaboration to kind of a summary of what the article is about.
So like similar to what's in the rationale or? Or?
Similar to what's in the letter, where it just recaps what's being voted on.
All right, you're making a recommendation now?
Yeah, we're making a recommendation, we can tell what the recommendation is.
Yeah.
Beyond that, I thought we had a discussion about explaining what the motion is, not necessarily explaining the rationale. I mean, do we want to revert back to the rationale? People, people seem to like to read it on their own. So if you remember in the, the letter of the Pinkcom booklet, each article has a short recap of what it is that it's what. That's what I was expecting to read, with the recommendation made, I mean, there's all five of them, so I'm not quite sure that we should go back to reading the rationale, which I take to have been.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about reading it, but they, I think the Pinkcom used to kind of paraphrase and explain why they voted yes or no. Casey?
I think that this is more important, based on what you just said. When there is some controversy between, say, the finance committee and the board of select, oh, sorry, select board, that I should make that mistake is here. And also, if it's, if it's a situation where it's not unanimous, so that there are differences of opinion. And sometimes the voters like to hear, and you know, no words.
On the one hand, this, on the other hand, that, but we don't have.
But the, the fact that this time, this isn't the, the situation is fine, but I would hate to invent that or, you know, have that doubt as what we will always do in any case because I think it's more important that people are clear on.
Right. What exactly.
What exactly.
And that's why I wrote, that's why I started recapping what the motion is actually looking to accomplish in one sentence. I felt that that's actually the first thing that popped into people's minds. After you read some of this stuff, well, I mean, let's face it, you know, you're out in the audience hearing this language for the first time. This stuff can appear to be a little daunting, but what is it actually attempting to do? And that's what I feel is, is the first pass. But like Casey said, anytime you get into something that might be a little bit more than than that, sometimes you have to get the tenor of the meeting too, as to whether something needs more than that. So for instance, I could see some articles where we would then end up addressing concerns from the audience as the Pinkcom because it's less clear to the audience that they should support something that we're in support of or, you know. So I would always look to speak to something when it becomes clear that there are questions. That's all, but I don't think we should presume that we need to decide every article that way. And I'll say anything here, I see some articles that are gonna need some further explanation. But you know, when Liz does third reports, I'm sure that's been answered over a lot of people's. The crosswalk, I expect people don't want to know how this really fit into the town, is this the thing to, you know, take out first or whatever. So we should all be aware of that, I mean, I've sat in town meetings where the motion was made and the questions came and no one actually answered the question.
No.
Yeah. I was stunned and amazed that that would be the case.
Right. So, meeting logistics, we had talked about a setup last time, like 45?
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know that everybody understood. So in the center, I'm presuming moderator, town clerk, town council, and then Wendy and I? Town manager at the same table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Isn't that where our institution sits?
In the back, that's where we're done.
Okay, so.
And then have two wings for the.
And then two wings, and the wings will be at 45, so that the wings can be looking as much at the audience as, as at the town moderator.
Does that sound right, Casey?
I do have requests, which may seem small, but it's not. And my apologies, Rob, because you learned that I would prefer to refer to the voters as the voters and not the audience. But I don't think that that fits them in there, right? This place.
Yeah, right, so we'll all try to remember that, we'll have little remnants of something to give out. It is, it is, I think, the proper distinction. We're gonna meet ahead of. We're gonna meet ahead of time, we, we, we post a meeting for six ahead of time, just so we can sit down, get accentuated, see how long the table has, has been provided to us, because sometimes, you know, we have fellow members sitting in the audience, because the table is for three. Um, I presume it'll be a little longer this time, uh, you've got the mics all set up, audience is in the center?
Voters.
Voters are in the center?
We're gonna get you down a rhythm.
Well, I don't have.
Where's the audience?
Yeah, where is she?
Right next to the voters.
The voters, the voters will be, uh, centered in, in the center aisle too, and there'll be adequate mics for everybody else.
Yes.
Okay, any other details?
I don't remember the, the details of the stage, is it large enough to have tables for six on both sides?
Absolutely.
I thought so, but, you know.
It's, it's larger stage that we will have sat on.
Yeah, no, it's, it's large enough, Casey, for reference, that when there's a joint meeting of the three towns and the school committee, that there's space for school members, FinCom members, and, and, um, school committee.
And how about the screen, is it going to be interfering with everyone?
It shouldn't be, um, but I will.
Where, is it behind?
Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be above Casey's head for all intents and purposes.
Yeah, wow, this is like a, a football stadium. Casey, this is kind of pretty remarkable.
I am. Could be a charity.
I paid a lot of money for this for me.
There was a question that came up, and, and I, it's a little late to be talking about this, I guess, but, um, it's frequently done in towns that have audiovisual capabilities much grander than ours, um, that they have on the screen, they have a PowerPoint presentation essentially, and each article is projected as it comes up.
We actually have that, uh, we, we put that together, uh, so if you're comfortable with having that, 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 would, we, that would be with the article.
The article, just the article.
Yeah.
Not the motion, because.
It would just be the Max that puts that together, so we, we have that.
But isn't that gonna create questions, it's the, none of the motions are different than the articles, right?
They, they, there are always questions about that.
Well, I'm just.
Whether they're on the screen or not, people always say, wait a minute, that's not what the article says, and I, I have to say, well, that's.
They either use it or not.
What's your, what's your reason for using it, Casey?
You know, I really don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, I just know from being in the Mass Moderators Association and hearing what other people do, and you, you must all be aware that other towns have gone really high tech, you know, and they have voting clickers and all this kind of stuff, and, you know, so I sort of just sit there and say, isn't that nice? And I, I don't bring it to you because I don't, it's very expensive. Um, but, but they do have the, um, and then that way, when you wanna bring up that diagram, the crosswalk and so, it kind of just flows in nicely and whatever, but it, it, I don't think it really adds to anything, because it is in the FinCom booklet, and we're, and we're voting on the motion anyway, so.
I think it's a great idea, if we have a technology there, for, I mean, if somebody misses, you know, if they're distracted as the motion is red.
Comes back from the bathroom, whatever.
Right, whatever, and it's up there on the board, they, or the screen, nineteen six.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have anything against it. All right.
I would just, uh, note that we, it is gonna be a quorum of ninety for the articles, anything over. Oh.
Yes, twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so just everybody, you know, do what you can, we'll, we'll, uh, you know, I posted something on Facebook yesterday, we'll do at least one or two more Facebook posts. We'll do more news and announcement posts, uh, with the heat blast before Monday and on Monday, but just if everyone can, uh, you know, talk to your friends and neighbors.
Yeah, right, no, because I remember, um, Deb Hamilton, uh, within the meeting calling friends to come, to come down to the forum, my thought to that was it would be nice if each of us called five people that we know would otherwise show up, but maybe won't, because there's nothing controversial and, you know, so maybe we should call people on Friday ahead of, uh, the, uh, Monday, to, to get people in the door. Because it's, it's rough when you are at seven thirty and you don't have a forum.
Yeah.
It, it's kind of like painful.
Yeah, and once we get past article eight, forum drops to forty, so.
Yes, forty, to the forty?
Yeah.
But once you get them in there, you can, you can get the forty to stay.
Yeah.
It's pretty low, pretty quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this'll be done.
Yeah, it's, it's getting, it's getting the ninety in the door that will be on the back.
All right, anything else?
Uh, we will have early voting available for anyone who wants to vote before coming, after coming.
Do you open the doors at what time?
Uh, technically, early voting starts at five, but doors open to go into the spaces. Early voting at the school, back to school, so if anyone wants to vote before or after coming, they can.
And the doors, we definitely gotta promote that.
Yeah. That's what I have then.
Yeah, so, and, and the door will be known, we'll know which door is, is the.
It's very obvious.
Very obvious, because a lot of people have asked about which, how, knowing which door, because a lot of times they don't have all doors open, and then the other.
We'll also have a sign outside saying this is.
Yeah, right, and then in, inside you'll have, uh, direct people to the article.
So to throw in a whole nother component, any chance that you could get somebody from the school to give toys in advance, because I know people keep saying we never get to see the school, bring them in for that.
Sure, we can, we can ask, yeah, well, we, if we can put that together, we'll, we'll find out tomorrow, if we can, we'll, we can promote.
With that on Facebook, I think.
But yeah, this graphic went out, uh, this only went out once, so we could send this out again, but this is, uh, something that.
It's posted throughout town.
This one here?
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've, I've trained it, I've, I've got it.
Good.
Several places, yeah.
Is that red arrow?
Yeah.
By the way, it's just a check. Yeah, right, dark in the lobby. Well, yeah, it's.
Well, this verb. So I was forgetting anything?
I think so.
How would you know?
Other, other than audience versus voters?
Good, buddy.
You're, you're in charge of throwing things at me, if I may, I have to say something.
I'll try to pick up on it, let you know.
So, um, it may not be necessary to, to move, um, wave the reading of the articles, but since we've done that before.
I've just decided that not to change back, because.
Well, don't we have to vote every time or not?
Okay. I believe, and I probably won't about this, I'll say it right up front, I believe the intent of that motion, which is in town meeting time, goes back to a time, and believe it or not, the moderator used to read the entire warrant at the beginning of the meeting, before they even took up any of the articles. And some of this had to do with people being illiterate or deaf or various things that, um, you couldn't just say to them, well, it's in your booklet. Um, and then the, the more common practice was what I was doing, which was to just read each article as it gets introduced. Um, so then that, waiting the reading of the articles meant you don't have to read the whole warrant before the meeting even starts, let's just get down to it. But it's not, it's, it's not complete in, you know, in town meeting time or any other parliamentary, um, thing that I've looked at, that it is. That, that is the point of it, um, however, it does change the way the meeting proceeds. And I wouldn't, it would go against the grain of trying to make expedite things, if we had to take the time to vote every time to wave the reading of the article. That's just another extra step to put in there, so what I did at the annual time meeting was, I, when I introduced the article, I said something very short, like article one concerns blah blah, but it was just a very short, uh, description, not even a whole sentence necessarily, about what we were gonna do, and then I recognized the person who was giving the motion, which is another reason why it might be wise to go ahead with this plan of.
Yes.
Putting the articles up there so that you see it.
Yeah.
Um, I've kind of told you what it is, uh, and then if the Finance Committee thinks it needs a little bit of elaboration, because it's something that's more than just a, you know, there's some of these things that we think that's fine, but people may not understand all the.
I, I really would like to explain it from our perspective, but not go into the rationale as we're at calling here.
But I, I frankly have, I've thought, thought for quite some time, that having the moderator read that article and then having someone make a motion, which is essentially the same thing, is redundant and time consuming, so this way does kind of, um, move things along at a better pace, and I don't think that anybody suffers any lack of information from it, it just.
All right, so that's the status quo, I think.
Yeah, so we don't have, I mean, the moderator just said that's, this is the way we're gonna do it, so.
All right, very good, anything else?
No, I, I, I will ask, uh, six o'clock or six thirty, um, my day. Yeah, we, we, we can go for six or six thirty, depending on how much you think we have. We, we're gonna take a half hour and assure you of that.
What are you gonna talk about?
Six thirty. Talk about a camera. She's gonna be answering everything.
We must have the secret answering. It's gonna be sent around. Voters, voters, not the audience.
So say it's six thirty.
Six thirty.
I think six thirty's good.
Yeah, I do too. Okay, we're doing it at six thirty.
The audience just is spectating, is just spectating, the voters are participating, thinking that that.
I, 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 I understand that distinction. Knowing that, I still will make the same mistake, unless you throw something.
Right, so we need to.
And Dan, it's at the school.
It's at the school.
Right, well, when I just was recommending the Finance Committee, it's kind of hangs out there in a, in a nebulous state right now, because I haven't really read the article. I've just said the article is about such and such, then somebody's gonna make a motion, um. It seems, it seems wrong to ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee after the motion's been made, because that's, it, it's always gonna be before the motion's made.
I think, is there any reason it can't be after, maybe?
No, I, but I, I have to ask.
I, 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 I don't understand how we could, uh, we, we need the motion first.
Yeah.
Oh, I think when we had the article being read, that was why.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
No, make the motion.
That's good.
Make the motion and a second.
It has to be a motion a second, and then, and then I had trouble remembering to ask the recommendation of the Finance Committee, because it, it wasn't the normal order of things.
Right.
Yeah, so once a person, in fact, there, people used to, um, get up and make a motion and then just stand there, because they wanted to be the first person to speak to the.
Yeah.
Article, which makes it sort of mad sense, I mean, why still have it, get back up again, but if the person's already standing there asking to be recognized to speak to the motion, asking for the recommendation of the Finance Committee, so.
Again, that's why we're doing it a little shorter and quicker, so that in that case, they, they can then.
You know.
Just step back for a second.
I could ask the recommendation of the Finance Committee after I say article one concern, well, article one's there, because it's, it's. Article two concerns, uh, money transferred to the, to the stabilization, what is the recommendation of the Finance Committee? And then you can give your recommendation, then.
I still have the motion that I made.
Yeah.
All right, can we let Tim go? Do we have any legal questions?
Wake up, Tim.
Wake, uh, no, I think we're good to go, I'm, um, I'll see you guys next Monday, and, um, I'll be in touch with Angus if, if any questions come up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, see you soon.
Okay.
So six thirty. Six thirty.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll be sitting in front of the.
Bye.